This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I really do want to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is present and also to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budget contracts and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just want to ask you right now if you could please just turn your cell phones off if you have not already done so. And really, we just appreciate the time you've taken to join us and for all of your interest in Waco ISD. Excuse me. Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presente y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir, comparar que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma, así toda la información que fue descartida está disponible para todos. Por favor, apagar su teléfono celular. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartí con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD. Okay, we will move on to item two, public comments. We have one person, Mary Jane Watts, who has come for public comment. Ms. Watts?
Good evening, Mrs. Cordowick, trustees, and Dr. Kincanon. My name is Mary Jane Waits, and I'm the Regional Membership Specialist for the Association of Texas Professional Educators, right here in Region 12. On behalf of the nearly 300 ATPE members here in Waco, I want to express ATPE's gratitude for your service in the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. As a local school board member, you have been entrusted by voters to work with parents, educators, and community members to create the educational vision of our district. This is a tremendous responsibility, and we want to thank you for your dedication to providing the best education possible to the students of Waco ISD. ATPE is available to serve as a resource for you at any time in any of your endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Waits. We will move on to item number three, Moment of Silence and Pledge of Allegiance. Before we move on to that, if you would just pause with me to just take a time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just tap down on the dents.
Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of January, Howard Davis and Gilene Espinoza Sanchez from the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy were selected for this honor. Howard is in 10th grade. He's a Waco High student and also attends Guam. His favorite subjects include reading, writing, and English. He runs track and loves hanging out with his friends. When he graduates, Howard wants to be a realtor. Thank you to his mother, Tocola Tillman, for being here tonight and sharing your amazing son with us. Gilene is a university high school senior who also attends Guam. She loves math and welding. Gilene participates in the UHS JROTC and enjoys reading. When she graduates, Gilene wants to be a welder. Thank you to her mother, Selena Sanchez, for being here tonight and sharing your wonderful daughter with us. And thank you to Guam Dean, Dr. Dale McCaw, for being here to support these students tonight. Next, we have our Texas High School Coaches Association Academic All-State Award recipients. Each year, the Texas High School Coaches Association recognizes student athletes who are high academic achievers. To be nominated for this Academic All-State Award, a student must be a senior demonstrating good moral character, have an overall grade point average of 92 or above throughout their high school career. The following students were named THSCA Academic All-Star Award recipients. University High School Football, DeMarcus Rutledge. Thank you to Mr. Coach Shane Vance for being here tonight. Waco High School Football, Luke Grant. Tyler Black. And cross-country, Benja Ryan Bernius. He received the Elite Award, which is the highest honor for almost perfect scores in And Richard Campambia. And thank you to Coach Lyndon Halt for being here tonight with your students. Next, we have our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. This recognition celebrates the theme for the 22-23 school year, Lead From the Heart, and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. Here to accept the awards are Chair Taylor Bledsoe and Executive Committee Member Jim Patton. In January, the district is recognizing Waco Education Foundation, an independent nonprofit organization that promotes quality education in the Waco Independent School District by funding creative educational programs and projects that are not covered by school budgets or tax dollars. Founded on the philosophy that public education can be endowed through a broad system of interested parties such as alumni, local businesses, parents, teachers, and the community, this group of incredible volunteers gives of their time, talents, and treasure to support our students and staff. Since 1999, over $2 million have been awarded to students and teachers in Waco ISD. In May 2022, the Waco Education Foundation presented 24 grant awards totaling over $111,000. And before the start of the school year in August, they also provided first-year teachers with a $200 mini grant to help them get their classroom ready. They've also helped purchase totaling over $21,000 for the $200 mini grants. To fund their initiatives, the foundation raises money throughout the year with various fundraising drives, campaigns, and through their annual major fundraiser, the HEB Celebrity Cook-Off. Tickets are on sale now for this not-to-be-missed event on Friday, February 10, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the base at the Extracur Event Center. This year's cook-off will feature 40 celebrity chefs, including our own University High School Culinary Arts students, who are returning to defend their 2022 Top Chef Award. Since 2005, the event has raised more than $1.5 million for classroom grants, raising over $111 last year alone, and all money raised goes directly back to the classrooms via teacher grants. For the sponsorship details, please contact for table sponsorships, Ms. Stephanie Hines at 254-755-9510. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything you do. Thank you, and Board, I would invite you to please take your seats so that we can present you with a special presentation. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and each year, the Texas Association of School Boards encourages districts to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month during the month of January. Our school board members are volunteers who share a passion for public education and Waco ISD. These seven individuals have the common goal of consistently focusing on the success of Waco ISD students, staff, and the district as a whole. They represent our community and serve as a link between the community and the classroom. The theme for this year's School Board Appreciation Month is Forward Together. It's fitting for the work that our trustees do as we, as the district, strive to lead from the heart for our students and community. Please turn your attention to this brief video for some very special community members who wanted to share how important our Waco ISD trustees are to them.
Thank you, Waco ISD School Board. Your actions inspire me to dream, to learn, to grow, to do more. Thank you for supporting our school.
Thank you for attending our sporting event.
Our fine arts performances.
Thank you for always thinking of us.
What you do has a far greater impact on our lives than you may think.
Thank you for your leadership.
Passion.
And dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you for making big and important decisions.
That impacts our education.
Thank you for always leading from the heart.
And for caring about us.
And us.
And us.
And for caring about me.
Our trustees are passionate, and we benefit from their service. They each bring something special to the table that helps provide a strong foundation for Waco ISD. Stephanie Cordowick, President, District 2, is in her eighth year of service to Waco ISD. An educator herself, President Cordowick has remained connected to her roots as a classroom teacher. This perspective allows her to view things through an educator's lens with a focus on how decisions will affect teachers and students. Trustee Cordowick is a steadfast advocate for listening to and engaging the community, and her leadership has helped us move important 2021 bond projects forward. Thank you, President Cordowick. Jose Vedania, Vice President, District 3, is in his fourth year of service to Waco ISD. Vice President Vedania is extremely active in the community and a strong advocate for our students. He and his family never miss a chance to support Waco ISD students and staff at various school events and performances. As a university high school graduate and now parent, he continues to be one of the Trojans' biggest fans and was there to help us celebrate the Trojan's successful season as Bi-District Champions this year. Thank you, Vice President Vedania. Jeremy Davis, Secretary, District 1, is in his second year of service and is an avid supporter of Waco's youth. In addition to serving on the board, trustee Davis is the founder of Mentor Waco, where he works to assist students in academic achievement and improve behavior. He cares about our kids and is a true advocate for our students' voice in education. Thank you, Secretary Davis. Keith Guillory, Trustee-at-Large, is in his second year of service. As a deputy fire marshal, board member, and parent, he serves the community while wearing many different hats. A caring neighbor, he is also the founder of Tell the World Ministries Literacy Intervention Team Waco and the Forever Young Scholarship, which is dedicated to breaking the silence against domestic violence. Thank you, trustee Guillory. Emily Iazetti, Trustee, District 5, is in her second year of service and has been a great asset to Waco ISD. Trustee Iazetti currently serves on the Waco ISD Education Foundation Board and has been an advocate for students, women, and the community through her extensive volunteer work. She is a proud Waco ISD parent and values staff and understands the role our district plays in ensuring Waco is a great place to work and learn. Thank you, trustee Iazetti. Angela Ochoa, Trustee-at-Large, is in his first year of service. Mr. Ochoa brings his financial expertise as an investment advisor to the team. A former educator, Ochoa was recognized as University High School Teacher of the Year. He comes from a long line of educators, is proudly married to one, and is able to view things from unique and important perspectives that serve our district well. Thank you, trustee Ochoa. And Jonathan Grant, Trustee, District 4, is in his first year of service. With experience as a small business owner and minister, he understands the importance of relationships. Grant is devoted Baylor Bear alumnus, proud Waco ISD parent, and is extremely passionate about improving outcomes for all of our students. Having served on various boards and committees, he embodies what it means to be a true servant leader. Thank you, trustee Grant. The gifts that we presented to our trustees represent their dedication to leading from the heart. They remain plugged into the community and are always willing to help. They offer steady leadership when things are sweet and savory, and they are outstanding representatives of our community members that they serve. Again, thank you to each trustee for all that you do. You are greatly appreciated. And that concludes our special recognitions for tonight.
I think we'd like to get a picture of the board, so would you all mind perhaps maybe taking your basket down to the front and we'll take a group picture? Does that sound good? Is that the best spot, Mary? Right here in front? Okay.
I just want to say, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but I know it's been an honor to serve this district and the kids and the families in this district. I just want to say thank you so much for the gift and just even ran to Whataburger for my dinner before I came here and just ran into an employee there who just expressed his thanks and wanted to thank the entire board for the many hours of volunteer work that you guys do away from your families, away from your kids, to serve this district and these kids. And so just wanted to pass that message on along. So, okay, with that, we'll go on to item number five, Superintendent Report. Dr. Kincanon.
All right, thank you, and good evening again. I have a few items this evening, and we'll start with the conversation about the Texas Association of Future Educators State Qualifiers. Before Christmas break, we had 38 students who competed at the Texas Association of Future Educators Regional Event, and they punched their ticket to the state competition. We're just really proud to have such an impressive number of students moving forward into that statewide competition and look forward to celebrating some successes after they compete in Round Rock in March. And so, super happy for these students, and as you know, that's one of the programs that we're really working to build through our Future Educators Academy, and this is a program that they can compete in and helps them prepare for being a teacher, which we desperately need in our district. So I'm very proud of these students. Next item I have is the Tennyson Middle School Groundbreaking Event on February 10, and we've given each of you an official invitation to celebrate the groundbreaking on Friday, February 10, at 9:00 a.m. It is a community event, and our special guest speaker will be Dr. Robert Duran, and who is a, Robert's a distinguished Texas public education leader and a former Tennyson administrator. Dr. Duran served as the Superintendent of San Antonio ISD and Socorro Independent School District, and he was a Deputy Commissioner at the Texas Education Agency. He grew up in Waco and has deep ties to the community, including being the uncle of our very own trustee, Ochoa. And so we're excited that Dr. Duran will be with us and has that experience. And a little note to add there, he served with Mr. George Dupree, who recently passed away. In fact, I think his service is this weekend. And so he has a story about Mr. Dupree walking across the bridge over to ask him to serve at Tennyson Middle School with him. So we're looking forward to that, but we're also looking forward to our Tennyson Middle School choir students performing as a part of the program and the community joining us to mark this milestone. Next item is our GW Carver Student Ambassadors, and we had the privilege last week of returning to the construction site with our ambassadors from GW Carver, and they were so excited, as were we, with the progress that has been made over the last few weeks on the construction of the new school. And I'd like to thank President Cordowick and trustee Iazetti, who joined us for that special event, and the focus of the engagement for that day was on women in industry, in the construction industry. And so before our students got some hands-on activities at the job site, they were able to hear from our very own Gloria Barrera, as well as female professionals from Core Construction and O'Connell Robertson Architects. They learned about their backgrounds and how they got into their career fields, their education, and their current job duties. It was really interesting. Our next ambassador site visit is currently scheduled for February 16, and I expect that our students will once again be impressed by the progress. In fact, I heard there were 120 workers on the site yesterday, so there's a lot happening out there. It's very busy. If you would like to attend on February 16, let me know. We'd love to have you out there with the students, and I know they would enjoy seeing you. We have 90% of the new panels up on the new school, and this week, the crews have structural steel and the roof deck in progress, and it's just so exciting and massive. It's a very massive building, very, very, very beautiful to see that going up. Next item and a final item are our middle school transition fairs, and it is that time of the year where we begin to engage students and families in discussions about next school year and helping them plan for the future. And that includes hosting our second annual eighth-grade transition fairs at each of our middle school campuses over the last three weeks. And these events provide families a chance to speak directly with our school counselors and transition specialists as they develop their graduation plans. Staff and current high school students involved in our special course and career pathway offerings are also on hand to answer questions and to promote the exciting educational opportunities that are available to our high school students. And in an effort to empower and support all of our students, those transition fairs were open 30 minutes early for families who had students in the Achieve, Aspire, or SELL Special Education classrooms, so they had plenty of time to move through there. I'm just really grateful to our staff for organizing those events. It's something that we started last year and that has carried forward. It's important for our kids to understand what is available for them at the high school level and get to think about those opportunities and really focus on their graduation plans. So I'm grateful for them and proud of them. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great stuff. Thank you. We are going to move on to item six, Monthly Financial Reports for the period ending in December 31, 2022.
It's information item.
Information item. Anyone have any questions? Okay. If not, moving on to item seven, Public Hearing Regarding 2021-2022, Taper Report.
Good evening, school board members, and I also want to thank you for your service for our students. It's always appreciated. I'm going to present to you what's the Texas Academic Performance District Report, nicknamed the taper. So this is a report out of the data for the 21-22 school year, but some of the data comes from many years past because they're indicators that are tracked over time. And I'd like to say, as we go through it, it represents a lot of forward momentum in our district, some really good data after many challenging years. So I'm excited to share this with you. First, district, reporting out the district name and rating. So we have an accountability rating overall of a C, and we have a special education determination status of needs substantial intervention. So I want to break this one down for you a little bit because it sounds like, oh, Level 4, needs substantial intervention. This label represents an integrative level based on indicators that are unique to special education factors, so it's not like it's pulling from accountability data or in any way. It's monitoring the intricate systems within special education. So what happens each year is TEA is forced to take every district in the state of Texas and create a bell curve. So there is always a bottom percent, even if that district was an A. It's always a forced distribution for federal funds and federal monitoring. So for us, the bell curve dropped from a cut of 1.89 to 1.71. So the state went down 18 points, improving special education features. Waco ISD went from a 1.94 to a 1.73. We're down 21 points, which is more than the decrease of the state, and that represents that momentum we have with compliance with the improvement required in various areas. So we were .02 from being a Level 3 and moving forward. So I just want to reassure you that we have a plan with TEA to address the areas that need improvement, but this feature is one that takes time to move forward because, again, every year, they're forced to make a brand-new bell curve out of the statistics. These are our campus ratings, which I reported to you last year. The ones that say not rated were not rated due to Senate Bill 1365, where their score was lower than a 70 overall. These are our statistics for approaches. I want to make note for you that there's no longer a writing test. Usually, there's five features, so the reading language arts test moving forward will be a combined test, but for these statistics, it was simply a reading test. So the gray represents the states, and the blue represents the districts. The state's numbers were down, as were ours, but it takes time to grow. These are our meets numbers for each subject area. And these are our masters numbers for each area. So the next portion compares the state and us in each level for each subject. So I wanted you to see the change over time. I'm proud to say that Waco ISD is up in every subject level and every level of performance, approaches, meets, and masters, with the exception of one area that was down by 1%. So I don't know that that really counts. So I don't know that that really counts as negative, but that's the only one there. So for example, when you look at the Masters level, the state increased by seven, we increased by four percent. In Meets, we increased by six percent compared to the state's eight. And then Approaches, both the state and Waco ISD increased by seven percent. So all of these moving up in various levels, you'll see for the other subjects, is attributed to the growth mindset. Again, I remind you that we set an individual goal for every single child, regardless of how they performed before, not just our low-performing struggling students, but our high-achieving students as well. For math, we increased for Masters, two percent. Meets, we increased three percent. And for Approaches, both the state and Waco ISD increased six percent. For science, for Masters, we increased by one percent. We maintained for Meets, and we went up one percent for Approaches. The Science and Social Studies tests are a little hard to pin down for growth because there are certain grade levels, and then they move on. So it's not like reading where you can look at it over time from three through the high school. Science and Social Studies is a moment in time, in five, eight, and then at the high school. For Social Studies, our Masters is up two percent. Our Meets was down one percent, and our Approaches was even. Our next data piece is chronic absenteeism. This is defined as students who are enrolled ten or more days for Waco ISD and are absent for more than ten percent of that time. You can see that the state's number went up eight percent. So this was a trend across the state for issues of chronic absenteeism. Please note the school year that it represents. It's the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. That's right after the COVID closures of nineteen twenty. So we had virtual learning. We had a lot of issues with parents and, and concerns. So this went up for us and for the state. We went up twelve percent, but these numbers will come back down because we're moving out of that COVID time. But again, I want to point out to you that those increases are the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year, where students could be virtual or in person. Next is the attendance rates, and Dr. Edison will be presenting to you raw data on the attendance rates for Waco ISD, and his numbers will be a little bit different than these. This is the data that represents our attendance rate with what was called the hold harmless. So the commissioner gave us a way to mitigate the effects of COVID and to stabilize our funding. So there were certain periods of time where we could use different measures for the minutes to be able to keep our funding, and so that's why they'll be a little different. His data will be the actual raw data performance. The dropout rate percent of students is up for both grades seven and eight and nine to twelve. Again, I point out to you, look what year that is. That's two thousand and twenty to twenty-one. So this increase of seven and eight and nine to twelve represents children who dropped out between October two thousand and twenty and September of two thousand and twenty-one. So that COVID time happens in between. The beginning of the year after COVID comes at that time in between. So our statistics are moving in a better direction now, but this was a very specific year in mind. Graduation rates, the class of two thousand and twenty-one is our four-year rate. Two thousand and twenty is our five-year, and it says two thousand and twenty again over there, but that's the class of two thousand and nineteen. Okay? So they're tracked over time for students who stay longer. So we are in the eighties. We are up overall in Waco ISD in our graduation rate. So diploma types is the type of diploma a student gets. There's a basic foundation diploma, and then there's foundation with endorsement. So this is kind of like having a major in college. It's where students select a cluster of classes, and they work towards that endorsement. That could be the activities that happen at Guama and Guaca. They're specializing in specific trades there. Or it could be our kids who do fine arts with eight or nine choir classes. So this is individualized to student interest. This lines with the transition fairs Dr. Kinkanen talked about, because we talk to the kids about, what do you want to do? Where do you want to go? And they choose endorsements. And you can see the class of two thousand and twenty is, that's the spring of COVID, and then the class of two thousand and twenty-one, we do see a decrease. But I want to reassure you that in any decrease conversation going to foundation only, the counselors take into consideration the student's current circumstances and where they would like to go for higher ed. So even graduating on foundation only, they are admitted to MCC or TSTC to begin their college experience there. So it doesn't necessarily mean that they're limited in higher ed. It's just a different path for them. Our next set of statistics are the Career, College, and Military Ready Statistics. This slide is our overall measures categorized by college, career, military, and then only college, only career, and military. We are down by point eight percent overall, but you can see, if you look at the only college, we are up by five point nine percent, meaning our students are meeting more of the college readiness measures than they were before. And again, that's the class of two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. So that, that number continues to grow for us. The only career ready, I'm going to show you in a second why that's a decrease. That has to do with the being able to administer the industry-based certifications. And of course, then the overall for career, college, and military. This slide is the college measures, as they're called. It's testing of TSI, SAT, AP tests, and dual credit, pointing out to you that we've had a growth in our TSI in math by four point five percent. So we have students performing better on that area. And at the bottom, dual credit, we are up by five point eight percent, students taking and receiving credit in dual credit. So we, the last piece where it says dual credit on ramps, the numbers are the same because we do not do on ramps. It's just a different kind of dual credit, but we go with our partners of MCC and TSTC for dual credit opportunities. So all of these measures are up, but you will see that we have a drop in what's called the career measures. And so the first one is that five point five percent in industry-based certifications. During the time, this is twenty-one, twenty to twenty-one. If students were virtual, those are not exams that you can give virtually. So students were taking the classes and getting the skills. They were coming in and performing tasks, but they may not have been able to do that. So think about Guaca, for example. Being able to administer some of the healthcare tests was a bit of a challenge for students during that particular year. So these numbers are moving up, and we review them constantly with our deans. Students who graduate via IEP and then students who graduate via special education are equal or down a little bit, but that's because of an advanced degree is endorsements, and you saw that we had a decrease in endorsements. But I'd like to point out to you that the class of two thousand and twenty-one, TEA is changing everything about accountability, but specifically, I want to show you a statistic. They're changing how we get credit for industry-based certifications. So currently, this year, when we get rated, it's just, did the kid pass the industry-based certification? Did they take the test regardless of their coursework or classwork? Which can happen. We have things like Adobe Acrobat and other things where students can take that, and it's not tied like the way CNA is tied to certain classes. So in this case, TEA is going to tie industry-based certification to actual CTE classes taken and credit earned over time. So I wanted to point out to you one really promising statistic. Before TEA decided they were moving in that direction, the class of two thousand and twenty for Waco ISD, seventy-seven point seven percent of the graduates completed a coherent sequence. And at the state, at the same time, it was fifty-eight point five. So we are poised and ready to take no hit in this area. Our students who are earning industry-based certifications are completers, and completers is two to three classes in a pathway set by TEA. So our CTE is very calibrated to be able to get those outcomes and review it. So Ms. Saxini and her team in CTE do a great job for us. District Profile is the overview of who we are. We have an overall drop in enrollment, but you see, what's promising to me is pre-K is up. We saw pre-K go down a few years during parent concerns for COVID, so our pre-K numbers are up. The places where we had, we saw a student decrease were in the grades ten and grades twelve, and that's different numbers there. The ethnicity distribution of the students is almost exactly the same as it was last year. Only one of them is like point one difference than before. So we are, we have African-American, Hispanic, white, Asian, and then students of two or more races.
Ms. Bell, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
If we can go back to that slide, elementary enrollment.
Okay.
Do we know where those, where those kids are? I mean, do we, do they go to private school, or did?
So that's a really good question. These are kids who left us in twenty-one, twenty-two. They're everywhere. So I'm, I'm always tracking data for Dr. Kinkanen, and we saw a drop in our enrollment once the eviction moratoriums were released. We had a lot of parents lose their low-income housing and moved to different places, and by different places, I mean Houston ISD, Dallas ISD. So I went through all the withdrawal forms because I thought, well, is it in the area? Is it something that's happening around us? And it really isn't. These kids went to all across the state, but when you read the withdrawal forms, most of them are saying, for economic reasons, they're moving out of the area. So that was an interesting trend. And then we had kids go to almost, I should have put up a map, almost every single state got some of our kids. We had some go to Alaska and some go to Nebraska. It was, that's not really happened before. We've had trends of states closer to us, like Louisiana and Oklahoma. So really, economic forces beyond us pushed them out. I did create a chart of those numbers for Dr. Kinkanen that she or I could share with you, just to, just to let, I wanted her to know where, what's happening here, what's going on for our students, and where are they going?
We were really trying to understand where they went, and it was really hard to understand where they went. They went everywhere. And, and that seemed to be the case across the state of Texas, just, someone went, some went to charter schools, some went out of the country, lots of different states, which is a really interesting phenomenon, unusual. And then other districts across the state of Texas.
I think it was eighty or more different districts, and we've not typically had that kind of distribution. But those parents who chose to write notes in the withdrawal forms when I sampled them said that it was predominantly economic reasons to double up with family for, for cost of living.
Thank you.
Welcome. Students by program type remains consistent for us with a ninety percent ECO DIS. We are ninety-six percent Title I, seventy-seven percent at-risk students. So none of these statistics went up, except for dyslexia went up slightly, but that's not a bad thing. That means we're identifying students more frequently now and getting them the services. For Emergent Bilingual and Special Education, you can see that we are on trend with the state in both areas. I will say that our special education eleven percent is up two percent. It was nine percent last year, but again, that's another number that when it goes up, it's a positive because it means that we're identifying more students and getting them the services they need, and our number is on trend with the entire state. Teacher demographics, the makeup of our teachers. Teacher turnover rate, and I take this opportunity to remind you that turnover isn't just they left Waco ISD, it's also moving to a different role. So during twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we increased the number of sit teacher roles, instructional specialist roles. We gave more opportunities for teachers. So that doesn't account for all of this, but each year, we do have to, I do have to remind you that it's not just teachers who left us, it's teachers who actually moved to other opportunities, like reading recovery and intervention, and being instructional specialists in some of our opportunity culture roles as well.
Ms. Bell? Yes. Pardon me. Okay, so I, I'm seeing the teacher turnover rate, and if I remember correctly, we were sitting at like twenty-eight, twenty-nine, pushing thirty percent turnover rate. Am I? Any?
I don't recall that off at the.
I think it was twenty-six percent in two thousand and nineteen. Dr. Gutierrez is agreeing with me.
Okay.
And she was in HR, and we worked really hard to get that number down to eighteen percent in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and COVID hit. And, and we're actually, we actually, when we looked at the data compared to the local area, we did really well. Was a lot of turnover everywhere. And even though it looks high, it was, you know, we just, we've had some hard years.
Yeah.
Not as high as what was.
Yeah, I, I don't remember seeing rates this low ever since I've gotten on the board. It usually was, when I got on the board, I specifically remember seeing like a twenty-eight percent and thinking, oh my goodness, that's quite a bit of people. So I am, yeah, just, I whispered over to Dr. Kinkanen, wait a second. Okay, so we've got eighteen, I mean, eighteen percent is phenomenal. Twenty-three percent is, is good. I mean, obviously, COVID. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And, and I've had it posted on my desk for a while now. For the year we created, we expanded the ISs to each campus. We started doing opportunity culture. We started doing the SITs and reading recovery. That looks like turnover if you just shuffle it. So I made sure that I knew what year that was coming, because again, the taper lags behind us, so it's hard to know. But it is a good, it's, it's positive number, even though it looks like an increase. You can see the state overall increased by three percent.
Do we know what the number would be if we didn't count the folks that transitioned within the district?
I don't have that access to that particular data, but I think that Human Resources might be able to pull that particular data, but it really is specific to contracts and roles, so it's a little bit detailed, but I don't have access to that.
I'd love to know the number of folks that just left the district or the profession, because if it's, you know, one percent, that's not that big a deal. If it's five, six, or seven, that's enormous.
All right. And then we have teacher experience, years of experience. These are actually up, and I love that TEA used to have a category, it was twenty years or more, and everybody was lumped in there, and now, because of people staying in the profession longer, it's twenty-one to thirty, and then now it's thirty and over. I'm sure by the time I'm up for retirement, it'll be like forty years' experience, looking phrasing that particular year. The Higher Education Report, so in students who were enrolled in higher ed in two thousand and twenty-one was students who graduated from, within the fall, spring, and summer. So they track our kids actually to higher ed. Some of them can't be tracked if they leave and go to another state, but you'll see in a second, I'll read off some statistics. Our kids tend to go to some pretty predictable places. So there's a slide missing from here, but I will provide that to Dr. Kinkanen, and I just want to read you off some statistics. So Brazes, for this group of students here, Brazes had seventy-nine graduates, and four students went on to a two-year, others went on to jobs and employment. University had three hundred and sixty-two grads, seventy-nine went to MCC and stayed, eight to TSTC. Thirty of them went to other colleges, so two in four-year, and then two hundred and twenty-seven were not found in higher ed. But remember, that's Texas higher ed, so we wouldn't know if they left. Waco High had four hundred and thirty-six grads, sixty-six went to MCC, thirteen Tarleton, seventeen to UT at various campuses, eight went to Texas State, seven went to A&amp;M, five went to Baylor, thirty-three went to other colleges. So you can see that those opportunities, that college-ready rising is providing opportunities for our kids to go and to stay and be successful. Okay? And then I'm providing you, this is persistence data, just given to you from the class of two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen. That's going way back in time. But TEA is beginning to look at this data, because if you think about it, if you graduated in the class of two thousand and sixteen and you were going for a four-year degree, what would have been your graduating year in college? It would have been nineteen twenty. So there's some, TEA is starting to track what they call persistence data for students who stay in, in college over the long term and to give us those statistics. Okay? That's all I have. Any questions?
Since this is a public hearing, if there are any questions from the audience, if you guys have any, I don't know, I'm calling you the audience, everyone, besides from the dais, how about that? Yes, sir? Do you have a question?
Yes. Is it pertaining to the information?
Okay, okay. Yes.
Yes, yes. If you go onto a site called TXschools, as, as one word, dot gov, you'll see that there's an, it's an accountability site, and you can put in the campus, and then along the top, it'll give you the option to look at what's called the taper, T-A-P-R, and you can see that for any district. There's also a link on every single campus's site directly to their taper, and on the district's website, there's the link to our taper and all of these numbers. You're very welcome. You're very welcome. Anyone else? Mr. Grant? Mm-hmm. Yes. 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 Any, any, any two-year to four-year? Because you can see they also have in there, not found in college, but then they have what's called the Level One certificate. So if you go to, and then they separate out, well, who got a degree, a two-year and a four-year? This is not data that's been tracked before. So they're, they're tracking it to see COVID trends for themselves. But the Level Two certificate and Level One certificate is if I, if you go to TSTC and you earn a certificate there, a professional certificate in automotive or welding or something like that, that's saying that, because those are programs, it's not a degree. It's a little bit different.
I don't think it includes out-of-state.
No. There's no way for us to track out-of-state.
It's tracked through the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So it would be Texas data only. Most of your students stay in Texas, but it, there would be a few that would go on to go out of state.
And it's gathered as a feature of their accountability rating, holding higher ed to student success. Mr. Davis?
Looking at the data, 0% of our students are graduated with two-year or four-year degrees.
Out of the classes of 2016 and 2015, that's correct. But they would have graduated in 2019 and 2020 from college. So that's why they're saying, well, let's take a look at it because everybody thinks it had an impact. It's teachers leaving Waco ISD in the role as a teacher. So if a teacher becomes an assistant principal, they're no longer a teacher. It's considered teacher turnover. So it's they leave our district or they leave, they don't track them to other districts to see if they remain in the profession. They just track if they stay within Waco ISD or if they move to a different role. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bell.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, before we move on to item eight, consent agenda, is there, I didn't get any requests for any items to be pulled. Does anyone want to pull? An item? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented.
We accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Grant. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Moving on to item nine, review and discuss student attendance update. Dr. Edison?
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight to talk about attendance. So let's jump right in. Last year, in the 21, 22 school year, we ended the year with 88.55% attendance. And I am happy to report tonight that as of the first semester, we have 91.67% attendance. This is a increase of 3.12%, which I believe is an outstanding accomplishment for the district here. We set a goal to improve attendance this year, and we've done just that through the first semester. 3% gain in the area of attendance is a, is a great feat. And as I talked to other districts and attend workshops, that is not the norm, not the norm at all. And so we are very thankful, grateful, appreciative of the work that's being done on our campuses. And we're going to get a lot into that here. So let's look at the highlights for the year. I do a chart every day that compares our attendance for this year compared with that same day for last year. So to give you an example, you know, you take today, Thursday, January 19th, you compare it to last year, Thursday, what would have been January 20th. And how were we this year compared to last year? Well, to start the year, for 48 consecutive days, our average was better this year than it was that same day last year. That streak finally ended on a Monday, October 31st. Halloween was the first time we had decline in attendance this year. University High School has had better attendance every single day this year than they did last year. So again, day-to-day comparison, every single day that first semester was better than every day last semester. Waco High has had similar success. They've only been lower on a few occasions here, and that's the day after the hoax, Halloween, Veterans Day, and a couple of others. But over 99, excuse me, over 90% of the time, Waco High has had better attendance this year than that same day last year. And to me, most importantly, every school has improved their attendance this year compared with last year. So let's take a little look at the data here. Start with elementary schools. You can see that most elementary schools had at least 1% gains. You have West Avenue and J.H. Hines here with 2% and 3% gains respectively. Look at our secondary schools there, starting with the middle schools. Middle schools improved anywhere from 2% to 4%. You can see Caesar Chavez at the top with our highest improvement of 4%. Our high schools, University High School has improved 7.43%. Waco High has improved 5.11%. Then our specialty schools there, Brazes, Wiley &amp; Challenge, each showing gains there as well. And once again, that brings us to a district gain of 3.12%. So very extremely proud of our schools to report that every single one has shown improvement this year compared to last year. Well, let's talk a little bit about ESER funding. So ESER funding is the money that was allocated for attendance. So we've allocated $568,644 of ESER funds for attendance. These funds have been distributed proportionally to each of the campuses. So campuses with more students obviously get more ESER funds than campuses with lower students. These ESER funds have been used for various initiatives, including attendance incentives for students, snacks for attendance awards. You know, you can see your little friend there from Kendrick with a popcorn bag. I'm going to show you a few more of these as we go through this. And extra duty pay for employees to help with attendance. So as we work on attendance and improving attendance, what are some strategies that our district has used to promote great attendance? I'll take you through four things here. First one, engaging students and parents. This is a strategy that's used across many spectrums in education, but it is critical to improving attendance as well. So it is vital that schools and teachers, administrators engage parents and students in promoting the importance of attendance and the role that it plays in a child's education. So once again, engaging students and parents, making them aware of the impact attendance has on their child's education. Recognizing good and improved attendance. And you know, there's an old saying that what gets rewarded gets repeated. And so we want to acknowledge students that come to school every day. We spend a lot of time focusing on chronically absent students. But we also wanted to acknowledge and recognize those students who are experiencing great attendance and improved attendance. So schools have put in different incentive plans and rewards to reward students for their great attendance this year. Third thing, we want to monitor attendance data. So at the beginning of the year, each school developed what is called an attendance review committee. And that committee specifically meets to look at attendance data. So I'll go around to each of the schools to help them with these committees and to look at data and identify trends, you know, transfer the whole school, transfer the grade levels on down to each individual student. What is the data telling us about attendance? So each campus specifically developing committees, developing time to take a look at attendance data. And that leads us to our last point, and that is provide personalized outreach to chronically absent students. So we've identified the student is chronically absent. You know, what are we going to do? One of the things, we're going to talk to the student. We're going to meet with the parent and guardian. We're going to see if the district can do anything at all to help this student with better attendance and focus on improving their attendance and any barriers that may have preventing them from getting to school. So dealing with students that are chronically absent. Let's take a look at our celebrations here. Want to take you through a few schools. We'll say that our schools are doing a fantastic job of celebrating attendance this year. But University High School, they have a attendance celebration lunch every six weeks, where every student with either perfect attendance or one day absent for that six weeks gets a hot dog lunch, and you can see here, with chili, chips, and cupcake. And so this last six weeks, the third six weeks, they had over 500 students that qualified to participate in the hot dog lunch for great attendance. Bells Hill Elementary, Bells Hill does a celebration every six weeks. This was from the first six weeks. They had an ice cream celebration. So students that met the criteria for attendance got to go out to the playground and enjoy ice cream on the playground. They have other things planned, like movies, popcorn, a pie in the face, and eventually a dunking booth. Caesar Chavez has had a couple of celebrations as well. You see at the bottom there, they had a Dr. Pepper float afternoon. And who doesn't like a Dr. Pepper float? So students, again, that met their criteria for that six weeks, got to go get Dr. Pepper float. Also, this last six weeks, they had a winter dance. Those students, again, that qualified for this celebration were able to do that at Caesar Chavez. Kendrick, Kendrick has an attendance incentive store. And so there's a reward system and point system that they use that at the end of the semester, students earn rewards and points based on their attendance, and they get to go to this attendance store to where they get to get items like educational puzzles, science kits, and journals, different educational items that they can get from an attendance incentive store. In our last celebration, we will talk about is Parkdale. Parkdale had an attend dance, if you will. There we go. So this took place at the end of semester on the last day, the Friday before school let out for Christmas. And we know that is usually a low attendance day. So schools worked really hard this semester to do things and make things fun for kids to come on that day. And this is one of the celebrations on that day to where students, again, that met the criteria, got to go and experience an attend dance at Parkdale Elementary. All right, let's talk a little bit about preventive attendance strategies. We have nine PCLs across the district. And these PCLs have a total salary cost of $246,280. This is separate from that ESER attendance money that we talked about early. Our PCLs work with administrators to identify and monitor chronically absent students. And our PCLs implement what's called truancy prevention measures. These are TPMs that are required by law. These include phone calls, home visits, attendance success plans, referrals to appropriate services, mentoring, and truancy court as a last option. So all of these things fit right in line with what we said we were going to do in the district improvement plan. And that was to improve attendance and work on identifying and monitoring students that are chronically absent. So we still have some work to do, but we're learning every, every day. And once again, I'm very proud of our principals and campus administrators for implementing and working on our attendance initiatives this year. And lastly, I want to thank the students and the parents here for your understanding of the importance of attendance and being at school every single day. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, a question. First of all, thanks for your work. When I was teaching, I used to tell my kids, just, you get your butt in the seat when the bell rings, and I'll take care of the rest. It's difficult to learn if you're not at school. So a 3% increase is fantastic. So thank you for your work. Is, are there any, are there any commonalities with, with the students that are habitually absent?
Good question. You know, the, first thing, I'll state the obvious, we're still dealing with a lot of illness. We're still dealing with kids that, you know, when you feel sick, told to stay at home, about everything going on there. But we're trying to pick up on some little things and again, trying to educate parents on those things. I'll give you an example. There seems to be a little trend of a family that may have multiple kids in the district. If one kid is sick, the whole family stays at home. You know, and that adds up. If you have a student that, you know, is sick a couple of days in a semester, it's not the end of the world. But if a little sister is sick and we stay on those two days, and big brother, and now that starts to add up and things like that, you have situations like, like that that you're, you're dealing with.
Mr. Grant?
Clearly, attendance, the primary reason why it's important is because kids can learn. The more you're there, the more you learn. It also happens to be a pretty big fiscal event for us. If students are absent, schools don't get paid. Do you have any way that we quantify what a 3% increase in attendance does for what the state pays the district?
I would say, first, thanks to Mrs. Davis, but I will say, if I may, if we continue this through the end of the year, if we stay with our 3%.
Current trend, yeah.
Yes, our current trend, we're looking at possibly about a $2.4 million increase. Now, that doesn't factor in other things of enrollment and different things of that nature where money can come and go there, but strictly in attendance. Those are some projections that we, that we have.
So at first, to me, it seems like $500,000 of ESER funds to invest in attendance, that's a lot of money, right? But if just that work leads to a $2.5 million revenue, that's, it seems to me to be a pretty good investment.
Mr. Davis? Did you have something?
I think most, do you mind if I speak? Most importantly, we need our kids in school to learn. And so when we established our priorities with those ESER funds, we made attendance a priority and gave a per-student allocation to each campus for each campus principal. Those are things you like, as a campus principal, you like to have money to do things for kids. You don't always have a lot of activity fund money. And so it was a way to push some money down to them to take care of kids. Chronic attendance issues are a big topic nationally. You see some of the research in the cover sheet for this particular presentation that was pulled from a site called Attendance Works. And attendance is going to be a big topic in this legislative session. And there'll be, you'll see a push to pay schools based on enrollment versus ADA. I don't know if that'll go through or not, but it seems like a pretty good idea to me. We certainly, you know, as a country, we've, we've really hurt with attendance since the pandemic. And it's just really important for us to be able to educate our kids, to get them in school. So you're going to hear a lot of conversation about that in this legislative session.
Dr. Edison, I just want to thank you. I had run into a teacher, Monday, I think it was Monday, and they talked about these attendance parties and were saying that. attendance parties, and were saying that it adds a whole different feel to their campus. When the kids know that there's going to be a party to celebrate their attendance, she had told me that there were students, excuse me, my allergies, but she had told me that the kids who had behavior problems or, or challenges actually weren't behavior challenges anymore because they wanted to attend their perfect attendance party. And, and so it's just, it's just really fun kind of seeing these pictures, because I think everyone wants kids to love learning and love going to school, and, and so I just want to thank you for that. I was, thank you for all your hard work, or teachers, or principal, our families who have been doing that. On the preventative attendance, I was just wondering, I had asked Kincanon, do, do they still do rides to school? So like if a parent's car breaks down, do they?
That is typically not the job, job description of the PCL anymore. We will work with families and take each case on an individual basis as to what they need, long-term and, and short-term as well.
Great, that's good to hear.
Yeah, I can address that more specifically. We, we don't really have a large white fleet of vehicles in this district to carry students in, and it is a liability for you to carry students in your own personal car or others. And so we do want our staff to be very careful about that. But we, you know, we do have, we have a goal, we just didn't have the funding, but we do have a goal to increase our white fleet in the district for the future. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to announcements.
Good evening, President Cordwick, Dr. Kincanon, and trustees. Happy New Year, or Happy Spring Semester, as a Guam staff member replied to me last week. Since we were last together in December, as Dr. Kincanon said, the legislature has convened in Austin, ooh, for the 88th legislative session, and filing began statewide for our May general elections. Filing for the general election candidates ends on February 17th, and we have more information on our website at www.wacoisd.org/elections. If you've visited our district website recently, you will see that we are still engaging our community and providing feedback on our 2023, 2024 academic calendars. Voting remains open through this Saturday, so we would encourage any family or community member that has not weighed in to take this time to provide us feedback on the calendar options that are, are there on the website. Also coming up, Principal Detlison and the Mountain View Elementary team will be hosting a rededication for their campus library in honor of former principal Raymond Weldon and former librarian Dorothy Buchanan on Tuesday, January 24th. That's just next week. The event kicks off at 6:00 PM with a fifth-grade concert, so everyone get there by 6:00. We also will see you again next week. Just another reminder, there will be a special board meeting to review the audit. We'll, we'll be back here in this room on Thursday, January 26th at noon. Looking ahead through the rest of the month, this is a busy season as, as school starts engaging in the spring semester. We also, we have elementary and middle school UIL coming up on Saturday, January 28th, so make sure all elementary and middle school parents are aware that's coming up. And as you heard earlier, Friday, February 10th is shaping up to be a very exciting day in the Waco ISD community. We will start the morning celebrating Tennyson Middle School groundbreaking and end the day at the HEB Celebrity Cook-Off benefiting the Waco ISD Education Foundation. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. We are going to go into closed session. There will be no action taken after closed session, so if you're a glutton for punishment, you can stay here until the end, but other than that, no action will be taken. So Waco ISD Board Trustees will now go into closed session at 7:14, this time pursuant of the Texas Open Media Act, Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.074. At 8:39, the board has reconvened an open session, and we are adjourned.